There are two O's, so one of them is going to be the same for all three of you. So I might as well do all three of you at once. And then the second one is office specific.
Might have to be sworn in even.
Oh, you have to be sworn in too.
Thank you. You can keep doing that. My guy don't exist because I was re-elected.
No, it's like the voter zone.
I wasn't sure I was going to get to speak last evening because everybody is just really... Anyway.
I remember.
You did. You did. I was very pleased, but I also was surprised because it hasn't been happening.
That's our standard. And when we're done with this part, this is not required. It's just a cool thing. We have this ancient oath book that lives in the vault. And this one has signatures from folks going back to the 60s, the late 60s. So folks often like to add their names to the record. Even though again, this is a meaningless oath. It uses some archaic language. You'll see men crossed out and persons written in. And it also was full of "so help me God." And if you don't want God to help you, you can always cross that out. But anyways, just a fun little thing. And it's something I can pass around. See, the top part is for you all. And then the bottom, then look at the other ones to see what happens. But anyways, okay. I know we have a short agenda, but I don't want to filibuster here. So I'll just have all four of you stand up for the first one. And you can all do this one, and then we'll do the other.
I swore I wasn't going to stand up next to this guy. Life is uneven, yes.
Okay. So raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the Constitution or government thereof, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
Okay. Now this next part, last one is office specific. So I'll start with you all from there. Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of city council for the city of Montpelier and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to law, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do.
All officially sworn. Right.
Okay.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office of mayor for the city of Montpelier and will therein do equal right and justice to all persons to the best of your judgment and ability according to law, so help you God, or under the pains and penalties of perjury?
I do. Thank you very much. Okay.
So I just noticed that the two mayor hands, one will be right.
Oh, that's nice. We're right in line. Thank you so much. Okay. Well, I guess we'll call the meeting to order. It's the first thing. All right. Yay. This is going to be great. Okay. So first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And we have a couple of changes. One is, I guess we're not doing the audit report today. So they're sick, so we're going to wait till they...
Are healthy.
Are healthy and can come back and present to us in person.
We're also not going to have the bills on there because they need to be printed out with the correct councillor's names. So you'll just have extra stuff to sign next time.
Okay. And are there any other changes?
Is there a street closure ad?
Well, it's shown as a...
I think it's on there.
Next item is an add-on.
Yep.
Oh, it's on the add-on agenda.
Oh, yes, Donna.
Since some things have been removed, I would ask that we consider talking about a retreat date so we could possibly get that on our calendars.
I think we were going to cover that under the orientation and/or the goal process.
Okay.
Does that sound okay?
That's good.
Okay, great. So the objection will consider the agenda approved. All right. General business and appearances. Time for anyone to address the council on some matter that is not on our agenda. And I'm assuming that no one's jumping up. Okay. So consideration of the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve or to move that? And then we can remove items.
Did we want to pull H off the consent agenda so that we can just clarify what we're exactly approving?
Yes. Yeah. I think if I'm not mistaken, we should probably approve, have a motion to approve the consent agenda, and then we'll pull it off. Does that make sense?
Well, you approve everything else and just...
Well, don't you have to have a motion to then remove something?
No.
Oh, okay.
Any single councillor can remove the consent agenda.
Okay. At any time.
Before...
Well, before you vote on it.
Well, right. I was thinking like, do you have to have a motion first?
No.
So I will move to approve the consent agenda except for reserving item H for further discussion. Any second on that?
I will second that.
Any further discussion? Are you all in favor? Please say aye.
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 Opposed? Great.
We do H right now.
Yeah, let's do H right now.
So my understanding was that we had a recommendation from the police chief to approve this with a change. And the change was to have...
The condition, they had asked for the whole State Street. And we just think between Davis and Taylor, Aiken and Davis makes sense. And then people can get into the parking. So our recommendation is approve it with that condition. It's a little smaller space. But that way, they still have State Street to spill out into. And we have a lot of barricades up.
Have city staff communicated with them about that? And if that's acceptable to them?
Yeah, they have. The application just came in two days ago.
Yes. Would you like to... Oh, yes, Donna.
And that was one of my concerns is that we have nothing that I know of in place when someone needs a street closure. They're planning an event, but they haven't included us in that planning. And yes, we want to work with them, but it seems at some point there also ought to be some penalty, some community service, something they do to help pay us back. Because it's a major inconvenience and it's unsafe for them to do it. It's not been authorized or approved through the police department.
Well, and what would have happened, we did talk about that, is you know, the police has the authority to take certain actions. We were aware of the event and knew that the size was coming up. And you know, if we had to, we would have closed the street anyway. I mean, the police would have got barricades and closed the street. They're going to have enough personnel on. So in this case, we're really just formalizing the action that would have happened anyway. So you know, you never know how big a crowd's going to be. They had duly reserved the State House lawn. I spoke with the organizers this week, and they had, you know, they've got their porter potties. They were actually talking about ADA issues. And they were like, oh, but we realize we're going to spill, you know, now we think it's getting so big, we're going to need State Street. So we just filed, you know, a street closure permit. And like, okay, you know, yeah, good. I mean, at least we all know and we're doing it properly. But I guess we'd still rather they do it in advance than, you know, we're still more prepared by doing it this way than not at all.
Right. Just that as long as you get what you ultimately want, you just, people keep doing it, that's all. And it concerns me. This is not the first time.
Did the organizers know that this is the recommendation from the city staff?
Yes.
Okay. And did they have any...
No, they were fine. They just, their concern was that the crowd was going to spill out into the street.
And if it does, I mean...
Then the street would be closed. And if it does, we would have closed the street because we would have been the safe thing to do.
Sure. So I would move then that we approve the application as amended so it would close from Aiken to Davis.
I'll second.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Electing officers.
So you, the council, have three officers as per the charter, a president, a vice president, and a parliamentarian. The president presides over the meeting if the mayor is absent and/or at the other function that the mayor might otherwise do. The vice president fills that role if both the mayor and president are not available. And the parliamentarian is the official parliamentarian for the council, although the city clerk also does a fine job with it.
And it has happened. We have used both the president and the vice president.
Yes, we have. Sometimes in the same meeting.
So I, last time we did this, I think we sort of nominated people to do this. So are there any suggestions? Yeah, go ahead.
I will nominate Ashley to be president.
Ashley, are you up for that?
I accept.
Any other nominations?
Second?
Well, do we need to make this a motion?
Yes.
Well, you do if there's, yes.
Yeah, okay. So I move to...
Should we slate it if it's...
Sure. Okay, so I would move to appoint Ashley to councillor health, to council president. Any other nominations or a second?
I'll second.
Donna, did you have a second?
No, no, I was going to...
Okay.
I saved my second before because you said not to.
Oh, okay.
Fine, that's fine.
Okay. So all right, any further discussion on that? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. And all right, so vice president. Do you have any nominations for vice president?
I would nominate Donna, councillor Bate, for vice president. Or do you want to stay as...
Okay, it's far enough. Yeah, yes, thank you. And to think about that, I didn't expect it. I thought if we had a vice president, I really did.
All right. Any other nominations? No?
I think councillor Olson was the vice president last year.
I think, I think that is true.
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yeah.
No other nominations? Okay, so is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Parliamentarian. Any nominations?
I will do it if nobody wants to. I would also give Connor and Glenn opportunity if you would like to...
I nominate councillor Krueger.
Yeah.
For the role of parliamentarian.
And no other...
Yeah.
And no other nominations? Yeah?
Guys might...
Thanks for the butter.
Okay. Well, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right. Well, congratulations all. Great, so we move on from that. Okay, ethics policy. So this is, this is something that we sign every year. Do you want to say any more about that?
Correct. Obviously, you're welcome to make any amendments to it if you choose, but the ethics policy makes clear issues of recusal, conflict of interest, anything like that. And we have the council approve this at the first meeting or soon thereafter every year just so that there's a record that this group of six or seven has seen this and approved it. And it's in the record and they're aware of it. So there's never any issue.
Any questions about the ethics policy? Concerns or anything? Any discussion? No? Okay, great.
And I believe Jamie has gone through and retooled it to put all the general neutral language in.
Thank you. Great. So I guess we do need a motion on this to approve this as our ethics policy.
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And rules of procedure.
Likewise, council sets up rules that are meant to lay out how things are done and how meetings are conducted. And I think these were approved prior to our retreat last year. And so, again, any changes? I know the mayor caught one.
Yep. I have one I'd like to make. So I guess I'll start, I mean, under number seven, and it says, any items discussed in the agenda under the heading of general appearances should be...
Under general appearances.
Oh, that's under general appearances. Hmm.
Wasn't.
That is not what I thought. So if it were under general, like the agenda, thinking that we would limit the time to 10 minutes for a subject seemed pretty intense. But having said that, I, just as a, we don't need to include it in here, but just so you know, I would like to just have some guidelines for ourselves as to how much time we allocate to any item. And, which is not to say that like we couldn't take more than, you know, a certain amount of time. I was thinking like, if we just set a limit for ourselves of like 20 minutes, let's say, per item, and if something needs to go longer, that's fine, but let's just check in with ourselves about like, hey, it's been 20 minutes. Do we want to keep talking? And actually, in addition to that, one of the things that I would like to do, and again, it does not necessarily need to be in here, but you know, for people who come to speak before the council, I think it's reasonable to have those comments be limited in time as well. Just as a general statement, I mean, we want to hear from the public. We want to hear everything that people have to say, but if it's going to take more than, let's say, two minutes, then my expectation is that people would submit those comments in writing. And absolutely welcome that. And just for equity's sake, I mean, and I'm happy to keep time for that, but I want to do that basically all the time so that when it is really crucial and we have a big crowd, that we are being equitable to people who have been at previous meetings. That maybe we're not so, you know, there weren't so many people wanting to comment. How does that sit with you all? I mean, thoughts or comments about that? Yeah, Donna?
Well, it's written, they have up to 10 minutes, I believe. Because I remember one year I tried to change it. And it's okay to have that range if you want to leave it in the writing. But I think it's important to let people know at the beginning of every meeting that that's the standard. And I'm with you. Don't wait to the last people. Make everybody consistently have the two minutes. It's really important for fairness.
Well, I wonder if we want to, I mean, I'm happy to say it at the beginning of a meeting. I mean, if we limit it to 10 minutes for general business and appearances, that works for me, that's fine. But for any further comments, you know, two minutes seems reasonable. One possibility is we just say it every time. Another possibility is we actually build it into this document. What's your thought on that?
Either one. I think even within the agenda, if you're going to have like public comment and say no more than five minutes, or, and testimony, two minutes. I think the more we can let the public know that, I think the better off we'll be and they'll be informed.
Do you think that's a change we could make to the template of our agenda? I mean, if we approve or agree, that would be great. That'd be really helpful. Rosie, then, Ashley?
So the way that I read this was that the total discussion, if the item was just under general business and appearances, would be limited to 10 minutes, but we could further limit individual comments to two minutes within that, you know, presumably if somebody brings an issue up that the rest of us want to discuss, I thought that that was what the 10-minute limit was.
That makes sense to me. That the topic in general would be 10 minutes, but we could still hold that two minutes requirement potentially to any individual.
That's how I read that.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you for that clarification.
I'm wondering if it might make sense to get like a clock or something that everyone can see so that way, like we don't have to interrupt folks or just so everyone's on the same page about the two-minute mark? I know the Supreme Court in some states has one, and it's quite helpful to know where you're at.
Yeah.
So if there's some particularly significant point you want to convey.
Yes, Donna?
I could volunteer to do that under my vice president row and my desk. As I'm sitting here.
That would be great.
Look for a battery clock.
Yeah, just something so people can see two minutes counting down. Or up, whichever. I'd prefer down, but...
Yeah. So hopefully, I mean, I don't think we need a motion about this, but just hopefully city staff can find us some program or dedicate a tablet to it or something like that. Okay, great. All right. Any further thoughts, questions, concerns, amendments to this document? All right. Hearing nothing. Zero motion.
I would move that we adopt the rules of procedure as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Central Vermont Solid Waste District, so we need to make an appointment to this body. If I'm not mistaken, we have one applicant for one seat. Is that right? All right, so I'm...
Is Ellen here?
Nope.
Move then that we appoint Ellen Chaney to the Solid Waste District.
My second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Gosh, we are cruising.
Kind of ready.
That's right.
You're sheriff in town.
What's that?
You're sheriff in town.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so we're not doing the audit.
But the audit reports are on your desk. So you have two weeks to memorize them.
The whole thing.
Verbatim.
Yep. Okay, so the District Two seat, so I am obviously not the District Two councillor anymore. So yes...
Do we need an official resignation from you, or is it just, does it happen now that you've been...
What do you think, John?
I think you do since you're in conflict right now, so...
Well, fair enough. Then I'm just going to let you all... I know, right? So I guess I'll just take this moment to say I'm officially resigning from my District Two council seat. Suppose I should have done that prior to making a sworn in there, but...
On my didn't exist prior.
Yeah, right, there you go. Okay. So the process from here for appointing someone to that seat, I mean, I can lay out what I, how I envision this process going. Or Bill, do you want to explain it, or?
Well, so there is no legal process, as I noted in the memo. The charter just says the council shall appoint and gives no other guidance as to how that should be done. I can tell you that the last two times we've had vacancies, the council asked people to get 25 signatures, the same as anyone who's running for election or wish to be. We've not had a situation that I can find in certainly in recent time when it was in conjunction with an election that had just been held. They've both, they've all been someone who left a year, and in one case, someone who passed away suddenly. And so in that, I explained to you guys that they just, they had been a former member, it was right about budget time, and the person who just got off said, well, I'll do it. And they just appointed them with no process at all, and the person didn't run again in March. So truly an interim fill. So it's really up to you how you choose to do it. You can, whatever you see fit, but...
When we open up a position on any other board or, you know, group, what, how many, is it usual to allow two weeks for somebody to get their name in? Like, how long is the usual timeframe for that?
It's at least two weeks, but you know...
They have usually more than half a year.
Oh, really? Well, it's not like this has been unexpected.
And they don't want the seat to sit vacant for that long given...
Right. So I mean, my inclination, I can tell you what I'm inclined to do, and you know, we can certainly talk about that if people have other thoughts. But I mean, my inclination is that we would set a deadline at least a couple weeks out for people to get their names in and their resumes, a letter of interest, to express that they would like to be, you know, considered for this appointment. And we'll take those names and give everybody a fair shake and then make an appointment at the next council meeting. What are your thoughts? Yes, Cora?
I think it is fair to have whoever applies submit the 25 signatures that any candidate would when they run for this office.
That makes sense.
I think having a letter, a resume, and the signatures, or you know, or some combination, as long as the signatures are required, and then just...
I'd offer just a fair amendment that if either of the two candidates who just ran, that they not have to get signatures again.
Sure, yes.
If they choose, one of them has already expressed interest. I'm not signaling any preferences, but just I think they did campaign and do their best.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes, Donna?
But if we're asking them to get signatures, I don't think it's fair to think it all has to be done in two weeks. So I would tend to go to the first meeting in April with a decision. We could have a special meeting in between if we needed to talk about it, but I think they need more than two weeks.
What are you suggesting sort of specifically? I'm not super clear.
That we give them, say, three weeks, and then when do we, what's exact length of time? I would say the first meeting in April.
Three weeks out would...
Or when is the 11th, right? It's a ways away.
Well, three weeks out from today, one, two, three, would put us at April 4th.
So we could possibly have a special meeting?
Well, so, but if they're in by the 4th, then, I mean, the deadline for the 11th meeting would be the next day. So we could still potentially have the appointment happen on the 11th. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So if we, but if we give them till the 4th, yes, Rosie?
The other thing is that we would presumably, if we had multiple applicants meet in executive session, so it might make sense to do it as a special meeting.
So when you say special meeting, I mean, are you, are you thinking of a different time, or?
Right, not as part of our, not our regular Wednesday night meeting, but prior to that so that whoever we appointed could join us for that Wednesday night meeting.
Oh, for the 11th?
Yeah.
I'm not opposed to that. We'd also have to just find a time when we could all meet. That could be tricky. We have done, I mean, when I was appointed originally to that position, it was during a regular council meeting, so it's...
It's a different seating.
I took the seat at the end of the, at the end of the meeting. But if we want to find a time before that, that's finally... Other thoughts?
Is there a mechanism for some sort of public input? I notice when there are other council vacancies in other cities, maybe a questionnaire is submitted to ask questions. That would, it would also give the opportunity to circulate those questionnaires to city employees, voters, other stakeholders, and have a public input process for that. Just something to consider.
I mean, are you thinking about, like, can people come and comment on recommending someone?
So with their letter of intent, with the signatures, maybe they would be asked to fill out a questionnaire with specifically asking their vision for the city here. I'd want to open it up to as broad a group of stakeholders as possible, and they might not be, they might not be able to attend a forum or something. This could be something to circulate to other stakeholders.
Something to consider.
Department heads, the collective bargaining agencies.
Because I'm not really in favor of doing that. It's our responsibility to appoint, so I wouldn't be in favor of doing that. although I would encourage folks in their letter of interest to lay out their vision for the city.
Then you could put that as a, you could say, this is what we're looking for, you know, we're seeking applications, please provide X. Yeah, to answer the question about public processes, this is a public, this is a public process, and at least in the past, when people have been appointed, they've come before the council, whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting, and made their pitch and answered questions, and supporters have come and also spoken to urge the council, you know, to, to express opinion, and people are welcome to send letters of support to you folks, or emails, or contact you, and, you know, it's, it's sort of, uh, you're the electoral college.
So, do we need to, um, we don't need to vote on this process?
It would be good to have a clear statement of what you intend to do, I think, just because, you know, I mean, again, it's all entirely up to you, but I do tend to think that the sooner we have a full council, the better we're gonna be.
Okay, um, I mean, if we're gonna have a special meeting outside of, uh, the, the appointment, um, or, I'm sorry, special meeting for the appointment, um, uh, we would probably need to just figure out schedules for that, but, um, just as a straw poll, are people in favor of doing that as a separate, uh, part of, as a, a special, separate meeting? Or do you wanna build that into the meeting on the eleventh?
I would like to do it as a separate meeting and have the person, so, just give them an opportunity to prepare for the meeting on the eleventh.
Agreed. So, we could have applications due on Friday the thirtieth, which is two and a half weeks from now, but it's a full week.
Can I tear this calendar?
I'm sorry.
This calendar?
Oh, sure.
Oh, wow.
It doesn't show the months, and I keep looking.
It's, uh.
It doesn't go into April, you know?
I bet it can. Oh, it went to June, oh, there's April.
Now, there's no March.
Well, March is almost over anyways.
See, we've, in the past, we've always had it where the big one was repeated, so I have to tape it back.
We'll have to get a new calendar.
So, we're here, and we're saying the third.
So, I was saying that if we, if you decided tonight, we could have applications due Friday the thirtieth, and then could hold a special meeting the week of the second to sixth, somewhere in that week, and then the person would be, take their seat on the eleventh, and would get all the packet materials in advance and everything else, by, on that Friday the sixth, when, when.
I think that makes sense.
And that's, so it's a little over two weeks for somebody to get signatures.
So, wait, when are you suggesting that we do a special meeting?
It would have to be the week of April second to sixth, sometime, two, three, four, five, six.
But having the.
Six is Friday, six being Friday.
It's even bigger, bullshit.
Now I can see it, wow.
We are instant service.
Oh, my gosh, look at that.
I'm hoarding on this talk.
You can actually see that one.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
It's great, thank you.
Right, so, so you're suggesting that we have applications due on Friday the thirtieth?
And then have a special meeting that first week of April.
And that gives, and that gives us the weekend to send them out to you, so you all have time to look at them.
Yep, um, Rosie?
It should probably be an evening meeting, assuming that we're expecting people to come and, and present to us in public, to us.
Yep, um, Donna, how does that sit with you in terms of, um, timing? Okay.
It's a little more time.
What's that?
It's a little more than two weeks.
A public comment, yeah, go ahead, come on up and state your name and your address.
Yeah, Jim Libby, fifty-six Liberty Street, uh, District Two, so this person's gonna be my representative. So, it's a little unclear to me, if you could be really clear about what's gonna happen at the two meetings, and it would be unusual, I think, to have a person make a presentation on the sixth and have you vote on the eleventh.
No, as I understood it, they were gonna have the presentation be the week of the fourth or fifth, they'll decide who the person, they'll make the decision.
They're gonna make a decision at the sixth.
That, or fourth or whatever day the meeting is.
Right, whatever day the meeting is.
And then that would allow the person time to be prepared for the meeting on the eleventh and come in and.
Okay.
Have read up then.
I got.
Does that, that answers your question?
Yes, it does.
Great. Okay, so how do we package this all in a motion?
Well, first, let's pick a date on the week of, date and time.
Okay, okay, yeah, 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 I guess we're not there yet.
Could do Wednesday the fourth.
I, I can do Wednesday the fourth.
Fourth is good.
Yeah.
Hold on. Like, he calendars still okay?
I'm good for the fourth.
I, too, am good for the fourth. May the fourth be.
Yes, that's right.
Set the date.
Wow. Daily and a dollar short.
Uh, I assume we're talking some comparable time, like, six thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, special meeting, April four, six thirty, for the purpose of discussing the District Two and making the appointment.
Should we do seven o'clock, just to give folks a, because we won't have our normal beginning business to give folks up to?
Sure, seven o'clock?
Seven's way better for me.
Okay. Actually, eat dinner.
Yeah. Jamie, you'll send out a calendar invite?
Okay.
She's on it.
Okay.
I have all the bits that you all have talked about, I might have the very bones for it.
If you read it, then someone could just say that.
So, what I have is a motion that would, that maybe someone would want to make to set a deadline of Friday, March thirtieth, for candidates, uh, for, I don't have in there, is for, uh, the open District Two council seat, to collect twenty-five signatures, unless they were a District Two council candidate on the twenty eighteen city meeting ballot, and submit letters of interest to be considered, uh, for a council position to be chosen at a special meeting on Wednesday the fourth at seven.
And is the city clerk's office prepared to check the signatures?
Oh, sure.
Make sure they're valid.
Oh, yeah.
Valid from District Two, and they have to be District Two signatures.
Right.
Just, I'm saying this more in general.
I would second what John Odom said, I mean, I would first.
First.
Actually, we'll make the motion, I'll second it.
All right, any further discussions? All right, uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and.
Do you have a plan?
Do you have a plan? Okay, so, um, uh, council orientation and information.
Okay, so, um, just really wanted to make sure everyone was avail- aware of the resources, and you, I put together a little memo, so, just to help you through, tonight, you should have your brand spanking new handbook on your desk, so it'd urge the new members and, um, prior members to read through that. We try to, to have as much as possible in it, if there are things in it that you would like to see for the future, or that we can even add to it, please let us know. For example, there's now a map of city-owned property, based on a conversation I had with a council member earlier this week. Um, and if you think there's too much, for example, I noticed there's at least three different memos about, um, I think it's the public meeting law, and, you know, if you think that's overkill, let me know, we can distill it down to one, or just put the law in or something. We want it to be your resource guide for the year, you can use that whenever you need. Um, other documents, I clearly would advise you, uh, we have the city charter, it is available online. Anyone who wants a bound, hard copy like this, just let us know, we will make sure you have it as soon as you want it. So, there's that, uh, same with the annual report, also available online, but if you don't have the written copy, there's a lot of information there. Soon, um, the FY nineteen budget book will be coming out, that's, we're just, obviously, budget's gotta approve, so we're putting that all together. That has a lot of information, you will get those left on your desk. Some of that overlaps with the annual report, but there's still a lot of detailed information, so I advise you to keep those. Obviously, you've got your audit. In, in with this memo was, uh, an update of stuff that the council does, I mean, excuse me, the departments. So, that, I think, is just, uh, we update those from time to time, uh, as, as those are needed, so those are documents. I'd suggest, and that we, um, let's see, that lost my. Is that, in the next few meetings, once we do our goals and all this kind of stuff, our, our meetings will start filling up, we're gonna have a lot of content. But the early meetings, we're doing some finish-up from the prior group, but there's, you know, right now, we don't have a lot of new initiatives. I'd suggest that at each meeting, we put one department on, and maybe toward, at the end of the meeting, just call it a workshop, where they can go through their, their staff, their budget, their range of services, pending issues that they have, I kinda lied to some of it, and that you all can have a general question and answer period with them. Just, you know, why do you do this, how do you do this, I've been asked, I never understood, and, um, we'll start with the largest ones, so that when we get more full agendas, we'll have smaller departments on by then, so that's okay with everyone, I didn't wanna presume that, but we'll start scheduling those, but.
I think that would be useful, um, you know, even as someone who, uh, knows the departments generally, I mean, I, I'm, I'm never short on questions or things to talk about, so, um, assuming that's, that's all right, and, and, I mean, as long as we don't have agendas that are otherwise crammed, uh, it sounds good to me.
We have tried that in the past, and usually they're at the end, and then someone says, well, it's too late, let's skip over this, so it'd be nice to do it while, while we can. And finally.
Oh, yeah, Donna.
I think to add to that, John Snell shared that the tree board is going to have May as a tree month, just as we have poetry month. They're gonna have things in the store shops downtown all about trees, so they would love to come and talk to us sometime before that, and they hope to do that in May.
Well, and that also raises the, the question of, um, it may make some sense to have some of our committees that we don't, um, hear from often, uh, sort of in that rotation as well, I mean, I, I think of the Conservation Commission, um, just, I'd love to even, you know, hear about what is on their radar, uh, for the year, and, uh, what they're working.
We'll do a committee and a department.
Okay. Good.
Right.
And then, lastly, is site visits and tours, these are, I think, people that do them find them very helpful, but they are hard to coordinate, they take some time, and it's, you know, people always want to do them, and, and it's very difficult. So, I don't know if you all wanna try to coordinate one as a group, or a couple, or have to be a series of them, we can, we can get a van or something, we could use the senior set of van perhaps, or.
I think one that would be really valuable, and I did this already, but I would be more than willing to do it again, uh, is the, uh, water recovery facility, since there's going, yes, the wastewater recovery facility, there's gonna be a big proposal coming to us, and I think it really, it changed my perspective on sort of what we, as a council, need to do, and, and sort of why we need to do things, and I think it'd be really important, given the nature of the asking, how large that project is in terms of dollars and cents, but also infrastructure upgrade and development. Um, I, I think that's one we should probably really try to, to, to get everyone at, um.
That would be good, and then, yeah.
I wonder if, um, I mean, I think it'd be great if we could do multiple tours, and I, I think it's probably not reasonable to expect that we can all make all of them, uh, but I know I would like to go, even just as a, you know, a, a new mayor, uh, just to, you know, go, uh, check everything out again, um, and, I mean, one possibility is that we put out some doodle polls to see who could be available for, um, for, for different tours.
Well, and if we could, if we could get critical mass, and then if there's one person that has to miss one particular tour, we can always get them through that individual site on their own, but we did this a number of years ago, then when Mary Hooper was mayor, and we got a GMT van, and he met two or three, during the summer, you know, when it was slower, and everyone went together, we warned it, and it was, and we.
What a plow truck.
A couple of citizens talked about it.
Right, sweet, plow, plow truck.
Plow truck.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, Tom left, I don't know, I don't know if you can do a plow truck ride-along, I do know you can do a police department, a police ride-along, you can do a night at the fire station.
Oh, what?
Uh, yes, Donna?
You know, the place we don't go is the rec building, and we are, is part of.
Yeah, I think I put it on here.
So, I think it definitely need, need to go to the rec department.
Yes.
It's gonna do.
All right.
Well, the other thing, too, that I, that's on my radar, I'm curious how people feel about this, but also, I mean, I guess they'd have to be open to the public, but it might make some sense, if people are interested, uh, you know, they've never seen the Water Resource Recovery Facility, like, that might be a great opportunity for people who wanna check it out to go see it, um, and if we could put anything out there about that.
If we warn it as a public meeting, then.
Uh, Rosie?
Well, last year, I think the water folks did a, a whole water day, right, and opened the facility to the public.
Both facilities, water and wastewater, yeah.
Both facilities.
Oh, yeah.
Not sure how many folks took them up on it, but, yeah, that was, I think they seemed pretty.
Sure. Sure. Cool, so, can we put that on your list to do?
We will, we will, yep, and, uh, we will put something together, and at least propose it.
Okay.
Great, so that was really all I had on that item, was how, how we wanted to do it, make sure that you wanted to do those agenda items.
Any other comments or questions about?
And I'd just say again, most of you already know this, but anytime you need to reach Sue, or me, or Jamie, questions, call, email, I want you to be sure you get your answers and information, so.
Um, I guess I would just add, I, I thought it was great to have all of the, um, you know, upcoming challenges and needs, like, just broken out, that was, um, very helpful. Donna?
Is this where we would discuss having a board retreat, to work on our goals?
I think we'll do that next.
Next.
Tell Donna wants a retreat.
She's pretty excited about that.
She said doing goal, the whole of her goal.
Well, uh, transitioning to goals. Is there anything more that we need, we don't need to.
There's no real action.
So, um, so now, I guess we can, uh, open up the part about goals. And possibly doing a retreat.
So, we thought the retreat last year was a really bad idea, so I think we're just gonna scrap it.
Charming, Bill, charming.
We'll punch it.
I, I thought it was super helpful, and I think we should really do another one, and I, I don't know, I don't know that I loved the two separate time format, especially since it was, like, during workdays, which is really hard, with a really crazy work schedule now, um, so I would like to push that it be in one day, and then if we have any follow-ups, that they be in the evenings, I can definitely, like, one day is easy, but taking, like, a half-day here and a half-day there, it's, it's really complicated.
So, I, um, is, in the proposal, I talked about bringing in a consultant to do, um, uh, priorities, goals, strategic planning. Um, I think what we would be looking at is probably the first night would be kind of, would be a retreat, it would be the, the, um, what they call governance. So, I don't know that we need as much time as we did in a retreat last year, I think we've got, you know, I think we reaffirm the, the group norms, we reaffirm those kinds of things, I mean, I'm, this is my opinion, I don't know, we did a lot of the work, and make sure that the new people are on board with all that, and talk through roles and those kind of things, and then the second, there'll probably be two nights in a row, is what I think it'll be, and then the second, the day would be spent mostly with staff, and then the night, and so we'd probably do the first part of the first night on governance, second part with the council laying out big picture goals, and work those two with the staff, and have us all together the second night, and really come up with the plan, and that's how that would go, and then, if, you know, but if we wanted to do a separate retreat on how we function with each other, we could do that, too, um, but I think you could, I'm certain, having talked to the people that, that would be included, we can include that all in one, definitely.
So, uh, perhaps I, I just missed it now, but, uh, uh, would that, the two nights in a row, would that include the strategic planning of the goals?
That is, yes.
Okay, that's, that's what would take up the most, the bulk of the time.
So, I'm, you know, I'm saying, say it was four night, four hours the first night, it might be first hour, two, one, governance, and how we behave, and then second, I, I don't mean that in a pejorative way, just how we conduct ourselves, and how we, what our roles are, and those kind of things, and just, if there's any questions about that, and then, and, and we have a basis to work from, I think, from last year, and I think those are all included in material that we sent out, it's in, it's, they're all in the, um, handbook that we got, so the, the work from last year's retreat is in there. And then, second part of the first night would be the council starting to work on goals, priorities, strategic planning, then we do work with staff during the day, get their take on those things, and then put us all together for a second, probably a longer, it might be a one-time, or if we start a little later afternoon.
Yeah, Rosie, do you think that staff would be, in one day, able to respond to, like, have all the information that they needed to respond to us about what things are doable and that kind of stuff? That would be my only, only concern with that.
I think they could probably do the best they can, and I think that's what the consultant would push us on to, you know, because, and also, you wanna hear from the staff about what their talk, what goals and priorities are, and they'll, I think, there's, well, again, it depends who we have do it, but there's some advanced work done to this, too, so, you know, talking to everybody, probably they talk to everyone individually, talk to our staff individually, so they would, we would already be thinking about some of those kinds of things.
I mean, I guess that's my only other concern with that, too, I mean, I don't know, is there a reason to do two days in a row?
Usually because someone's here.
Oh, for their time, for the consultant's time.
And our memory. The other thing that happened last time with the retreat, and I would like to see us spend time on, is council's evaluation. I felt what we started it, but it's very lacking, as far as I'm concerned, and so, would this be the time we could spend time on actually having some?
You mean the evaluation itself, or?
Evaluation of the, of the council itself, and then if we're gonna look at yours and have any modifications, is this?
We might wanna do that separately, though, just we might take that.
It came in, it ended up happening last year, part of the subject matter, but.
Okay. I could picture doing, I mean, especially as we are reviewing our norms, um, that, I mean, it does seem like it would lend itself as a time to reflect on how we've done, um, so I, and I could picture that part of it.
Might just at least start the, start the conversation, and be open to having that there if it works.
Yep.
And I, I think it would be good to give new members, like, kind of an opportunity to, like, see and observe and participate, and, and kinda get a feel for what it is that we have done, and sort of where we're headed, I, I think that would be fair, to give everybody a chance to figure out.
And realistically, when we come to schedule this, it's gonna be at least a couple of months out, I would imagine, just by the time, so people will have had a, a little bit of chance to.
Oh, Donna?
See, I really didn't wanna talk about this. One of the things that came up in my reelection campaign was that, for me, it's real important to have a goal, and whether that's the community service goal, that you have it, and then you start steps towards it. I feel we sort of dropped team bridges and that concept, and I would like to get it back in place before we start setting goals, so that we have a wider vision, we're going to, and then a chunk for this year is related to the whole. And that, I think that kind of approach would get us away from just continuing our goals that we've had in the past.
So, I, not to comment on team bridges, my goal, my plan, my thinking for this, my reason for proposing this, is I would like, not, not that there's anything bad with the prior goals, but we really have kind of a whole new group here, and would really be to start and build goals from scratch, and, you know, some of them might end up being the same, and some of the activities may end up being the same, but it, it, truly what is developed from this group of seven as community, so if team bridges or that approach is one of the things that's a top priority, and we wanna work on that, then we would come up with the action steps, and if it's not, then we know, and it's, it's based on a deliberative conversation with someone else, pushing the conversation, so I'm not trying to manage my bosses, but also I'm gonna wanna participate, or the mayor trying to manage the group, you know, we have someone in, someone who works with municipal government, that's another idea.
Does that sound reasonable? Or, or was there more to your comment?
I, I really, so my point was, I don't, I hope we don't just take last year's goals and.
No, no, not at all, but it just seemed one of the ingredients I would hope to incorporate is to go back to the vision that was put out through that contest, and I, I don't know where to insert it, if we don't talk about it, either we have some time spent on it before the retreat, so that our new council members can be more aware of what those were, and make some decisions outside of the retreat, or do we do it all at the retreat, I just.
Well, I mean, I'm thinking out loud here, you could, we could have an informational discussion, so, prior to the retreat, for people that wanna get updated on it, and then, but we don't.
Sure, well, and, I mean, my thinking on that, too, had been that really the, the place for that conversation. Well, and, I mean, my thinking on that too had been that really the, the place for that conversation is in the context of the, the city plan. Um, because that is the document that guides the work of the staff and, and the general, general direction of the city. So that's how I had anticipated talking about specifically the team bridges, um, proposal. But if, if there are other, if, I mean, if you're interested in doing more, yeah, go ahead.
No, just that, and one of the planning commissioners that I talked to recently felt that they have been left a little bit in limbo as to what is the vision of the council as they approach redoing the master plan. Or whatever we're supposed to call it now.
City plan.
City plan. And I realized they're right and she referred to team bridges and I said, oh yes, there's a lot of inspiration there and there may be pieces of it we want to follow through on, but we haven't made any decisions about it. And so to me, that's part of our goals, staff follows our goals too, so. If not now, later.
Well, we can certainly talk about that during, uh, the, the, uh, the retreat time. I mean, would, do you think that would be sufficient?
It would appease me.
Okay, okay.
Are the rest of you interested in it?
I'll say yes, I am. And I, and I have heard similar, uh, uh, ideas to you that, that, uh, there was this whole process, uh, that it seems to have been, uh, to some degree, uh, left alone and that it should be brought back to the city plan, I believe. So I think that you and Anne are on the same page as far as I can tell. As far as getting the, the, in- incorporating what came out of the, the net zero contest, uh, into the city plan and discussing it ourselves, uh, as necessary, yes?
Yeah, great. Okay, sounds good. Uh, so do we?
So, oh, yeah.
Rosie.
So there was a bit of a spending request in there, um, and I've talked to Bill about this a little bit and I'm fairly comfortable with it, um, but I thought that we should kind of bring that out and just talk about that for a second. Um, that this, we are making a, a significant investment in this process this year, um, that's more than we've done in the past.
So for a consultant and for some tracking software.
Um, which would, which will allow for public disclosure of where we're at. So we have a, I did look at, I, meaning Todd, looked at, um, opportunities, uh, for funding and, uh, we're pretty confident we can do this. Uh, we have about ninety-seven fifty in a software purchase this year, or that we had anticipated to spend more, that we, we won't. So, um, that's available for software. We have ten thousand dollars in project management and this, that's what this is, is a project management software tool that would be available. Uh, and then we, um, we would allocate these resources also to the water and sewer funds. We'll all be, so that would be a week, about another ten thousand serious. So it's about thirty thousand of the total, um, for, and then I, I think we're probably gonna be in the thirty-three thousand. So the rest would come from fund balance, whatever exceeded that, but it wouldn't be a big significant hit. And then for, in the future, the ten thousand dollars per year licensing fee, we actually had a fourteen thousand dollar licensing fee planned that we probably won't continue with, so that would free that up and we would use this as a licensing fee. Should be, should be covered and it is money, you know, otherwise we would save that money. So I'd be clear that it's not, uh, free, but there are places that are relevant that can be applied to.
Any other comments about that? One of the things that I am very interested in, uh, in moving forward over the course of this year is having some way to track a, a lot of different data for the city, particularly over time, like to see how we're doing. And I think it tells, there's a lot of stories that can be told from data. I mean, this is the science teacher in me speaking that loves data, uh, and telling stories from data. I, this, if I'm not mistaken, Bill, this is the kind of software that, um, would handle potentially a lot of different kinds of data.
Would handle informational data also, so basically, once we develop a strategic plan, the, the plan itself would go into the software with the action steps. And then as people were completing those steps, they could, it wouldn't just have to come from me filling out the little form in green and red. But, you know, maybe the DPW staffer says, yes, this task is completed, it goes in. So any of you can look and, and the public gets a kind of a higher end version of it, that they can see how things are coming, whether, you know, streets are being paved on time or whatever indicators that we've, uh, you know, how we're doing for certain indicators. Uh, so, you know, they call them dashboards and those kinds of things, someone can look at it quick glance and see the various outcomes that are happening, um, so.
So I think we probably do need a motion because we're, um, spending some money on this. Any, any other thoughts on this aspect? Alright, so is there a motion?
So I would move that we instruct the city manager to move forward with the, uh, goals process as, uh, he has presented it to us, including, um, uh, arranging for a consultant and moving forward with the purchase of the tracking software.
Any second? Great, uh, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think, I think we will all benefit from this.
Really useful. Okay, and committee appointments, and Donna, I know you had some comments about the committee appointments.
Well, I think it'd be good to maybe discuss some of the committees, especially for our new counselors, but I would like to wait until we have our sev- sixth member, uh, in place before we do the appointments.
It's fine with me, I, I'm, just want to check in, I mean, are there any committees that, uh, are, that need another person before?
There are two, it looks like. Um, it looks like the Community Services Steering Committee, uh, Justin was the only counselor on that.
And they're not really active right now.
Okay, and then the Housing Task Force?
I'm interested in that one, so if others aren't. I mean, I have been, I went to one of the meetings and I plan to continue going to the meeting, so maybe we don't need to do a formal appointment, but I would, I will commit to going to the, the meetings for the next couple of months on that. So there is some council representation there.
Okay, great. And then it looks like the, uh, not Pelear Foundation?
Well, those don't necessarily have to be council members, although we put a rep on. I know, um, Jean was really interested in that, she asked if she wanted to stay on, but, um, it involves some fundraising, but. Someone's interested, again, but that, I don't think that's a critical need.
Water rate study committee.
That is dormant.
So say, aren't they mostly done?
Well, they're either done, either done or need to start again, but we would start from scratch, so. I think that, in my estimation, the one that we probably most need people is the, um, the TIF core group. It was the mayor, Holler, Jean Olson and Donna, and so we've already co-opted Anne. And unfortunately, all those meetings are daytime meetings, so it's tough, you know. You know, the council that isn't as available as day as some have been in the past, so, um, but if someone's interested at least being looped in, in more detail, uh, it'd be good to have another, another person because we're, we are gearing up.
And, and the new council members might want to attend some meetings this month. Well, and, and look and, and consider what they would, what they request.
Um, one, we may need somebody on as the Building Code Appeals Committee. I haven't been notified of any, but I'm just noting that we're coming up on that permitting season, so this is a likely time to get some. And I.
Although the, the bulk of those were sprinkler variances.
Right.
The vast majority, but, but yes.
Should we talk about maybe the TIF, uh, group and the, the Building Code Appeals and?
You guys make interim appointments too on those as, until.
Um, is anybody else interested in, um, being on the, the TIF committee?
Tax increment financing, just for those. We're talking a lot of shorthand here, please interrupt.
I'd like to continue.
How many do we need, um?
Well, we don't, I mean, it's, it's up to us. I just think we're, we're really in crunch time now and in fact, we're gonna talk about that under our management report. We're, you know, closing in on probably wanting to send a letter of intent, which doesn't commit us to anything, but it gets us in the queue for the state and then coming back with a proposal to the full council. And so I think, you know, it's the time for buy-in and people to be involved and, and, but I, it's also, I, I do acknowledge it's, their, their meetings are, we're, you know, we're dealing with the consultants.
So can we di- uh, just deal with Donna and I for now, or do we need, do we need any more? Does that work?
That's a work.
Okay.
If anyone's interested or wants to talk to any of us in any detail, just let somebody have them do it when I'm on, or when I'm two. Uh, one free, but no more than one.
Alright, anybody for the, the Building Code Appeals Committee?
It's lots of fun.
I'm happy to serve on that, yeah.
Great, thank you, Glenn. Alright, and I'm, I'm gonna assume that we don't need a motion on. We're, do we? Uh, well, we can make the motions.
For the building codes, you definitely would because it's part of our ordinance.
Okay, then.
I will move to appoint Glenn to the Building Code Appeals Committee. Second.
Any other discussion?
At some point, we, I mean, we should talk about whether we want, you know, we have, I don't remember the last time we reopened the citizens. It's just been.
For the building code?
One non-council member. The term or not, we should look at that and see.
No. I don't think I remember reading anything about the limit, so.
Okay, great, well, um, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, yes.
Sorry, the other one that I wanted to bring up that's not on this list is we have formulated a council committee on committees, which was tasked, with rather tongue-in-cheek name, but it was tasked with, um, figuring out what our criteria was gonna be for appointing people to committees because we were running into situations where we were having lots of competition for the seats and we weren't sure whether to just reappoint people over and over or what our criteria should be there. So, um, I believe that the, that Mayor Holler was one of the folks on that committee, so you probably need a, a third other person, a second. I thought there were three of us, I thought it was you and myself, you, John and I, I thought.
I was, actually.
Oh, were you?
I was, but John never called a meeting, so we never met.
We never, yeah, we did never, we did not meet, but I would like to actually.
It is desperately needed, yeah.
Uh, I was just talking about this today, actually, at, at work with some folks, but I, I think we do need to schedule a meeting, but I'd like to wait and see if, I, I think we had one appointment tonight, but it was one person applying for one spot. I'm, I want to make sure everybody has the chance to figure out what we're doing.
Two coming up, in the, in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, what's the next?
So, April eleventh, we'll have a full, full board then.
Okay, um, well, so, do you three want to continue? Or what, you were not on it and it was?
Donna and I.
Ashley and I were with John.
I will, I'll just say I'm, I probably don't want to be on that committee, um, but if there's.
I'm happy to be on it.
Okay. Do you, well, um, hmm, should we do this as a motion or then we can just?
I think we can just set the committee meeting.
Since there's no, you know.
It's a council committee anyway, it's not a.
Okay, great.
Who's gonna call it, that was the problem last time, you know. You're gonna have the committee, someone should.
Ashley, go for it.
Ah, it's such a Leslie Knope thing.
So I move that we appoint, uh, Ashley as the chair of the committee on committees. Correct? And that we appoint Connor as the third member.
Second. Any other discussion? Alright, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And we'll.
Go.
Uh, take up the other appointments at another time? Does that sound reasonable?
It's April eleventh, man.
Yes. Great, so that is it. So, uh, so we're gonna do council reports. Um, so did you guys hear about what council reports are basically? Okay, alright, well, chill, I guess, let's start over there, Rosie.
Oh, but I have nothing to report.
Uh, yeah.
I would just like to thank the city staff for putting together last night's event. I think it was a really great send-off for John and Jean and Justin. Um, and it was nice to sort of see everybody socially, which doesn't happen very often. Uh, and welcome, Madam Mayor, Ann Watson, and our two news members, Connor and Glenn. It's gonna be a pleasure to serve with you guys.
Donna?
This is your opportunity to bring up anything, particularly if you have something you want your constituents to know. Um, and so the one thing I'd like to, to see us do is develop a better system to tell voters where the information is. One of the complaints I got standing on the stoop prior to election was that people were hunting for information and even when they walked into the election, the voting boom, they didn't see the charts to the right of them. They just didn't see it and some people didn't understand how much was on the website. So I think we need to do some public education about where things are and under what title. That was the other thing, people were really surprised how many articles we had. So I think if we, we have the information disseminated, but we don't let people know that we have it disseminated, that sounds a little... Anyway, so I'd like to sort of work on that and keep that in our awareness and just thank the voters for re-electing me and being back here.
Connor?
Oh, sure, I just, um, want to echo what Ashley said there, there was a lovely reception last night, so thanks to everybody for putting it together. Um, and, and really, you know, it's a bit daunting being a new council member, um, but everybody's been nothing but welcoming so far. I mean, short of doing trust falls, you know? Everybody's been.
That's the retreat.
There's still time.
But, but from the previous councilor, counselors to everybody on there now, um, you know, I can tell it's gonna be a great experience, uh, working with all of you there, uh, so really looking forward to it. And, uh, I would also thank the voters of district too, there was a hard fought campaign and, uh, and my opponents there who ran very clean races, so, uh, I appreciate that. The one announcement, and we already covered it a bit, would be, uh, March twenty-fourth, uh, March for Our Lives, noon to two on the State House lawn, so just to put your down with us, thanks very much.
I have very little to report, but I'm pleased to be here and, uh, again, as Connor said, grateful to everyone for the warm welcome. Thanks to the, to the voters, everyone who voted, uh, and to everyone who ran. It was, uh, a real learning experience, uh, for me and, and it continues to be. So I look forward to working with you all, I'll try to do my best, thank you.
Ian, I remembered I had one thing to report.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Rosie.
Uh, I just wanted to thank, um, city staff, particularly Jamie and Zach, for putting the new parking map on the city website. There's an interactive version that allows you to kind of move around and there's also a printable version, um, as well as the parking prices posted, so hopefully that will help alleviate some confusion.
Hey, Jamie.
Alright, so I have a, a few things, um, first of all, just want to thank everybody who turned out to vote, uh, the last election. Thanks for participating and thanks for, for your votes, I mean, I know I had no opponent, but I'm still very grateful. Um, and I just want to also say to all of you that I'm really excited to work with you and to, to help lead this group. Um, just a couple of other things that are coming up, I just want to make sure people are aware. So one of the upcoming meetings, we're gonna be appointing someone to the newly formed Central Vermont Internet or CBI, uh, group. And I, I'm particularly excited about that, uh, entity and, uh, you know, the service that they may bring to Central Vermont. So, um, you know, hoping that we get some good candidates for, uh, you know, who can be our representative to their board. Uh, so that's one thing. Um, sort of on the, on the issue of information and getting information out to the public. One of the, um, committees that I, that doesn't exist, um, necessarily yet, uh, is, um, I, I'm interested in getting a group together of people who are, be interested in working on information, um, digitally with the city. Um, I, I've been sort of working on this sort of behind the scenes, uh, with city staff to, um, to, uh, get our, our systems to be more searchable and we're ma- I think we're making progress, um, in that conversation, which is great. Um, but I, there are lots of other things, uh, to take on in terms of information with the city. So, um, if you're interested in helping me out with that, that's great, uh, so just putting, putting that on your radar. Um, and then another thing is that, you know, just as, gosh, you know, as, as a teacher, when you step into a new role, I mean, the first thing you do right is you like look at your, the walls of your classroom and like, what are you gonna use them for? And so I've been thinking about the, the walls of this chamber and, you know, what, what do we want the purpose of, um, the, the walls to be? And, I mean, while these paintings are great, um, I would love to see, um, uh, just a little bit of intention as to what is going on the walls and specifically, um, the things that I, that I want to see and hear are images that, uh, remind, remind us of who isn't here and who, who can't be here. Um, another, uh, possible goal is just where do we want to go as a city, like where are we headed? What's our vision, so things that remind us of that vision. And then third, just, you know, um, representation matters, right? And so, uh, you know, images of where, you know, people who come to, to sit at this table up here and don't see themselves represented on this horseshoe, they might see themselves represented on the walls somehow. Um, so I have a, a request. Um, so I have a, a request out to the TW Wood Gallery, who supplies us with these images, if they, had anything that would fit those criteria, and so they, uh, the fellow over there has gotten a, a proposal to me, which I'll end up sharing, um, with all of you, but there, you know, there may, I, I mean, I'm certainly open to, to suggestions, or if you have, um, you know, thoughts or ideas as to, to what that should look like, so maybe there might be a couple of you who would be interested in helping pick out some art to go in, uh, on these walls, that would be great. Uh, and then, we're also, just today, we're talking about, uh, all of the, all of the mayors that are out front, um, and that, and that maybe we want to use that space differently as well, so, again, if, if there were a couple people who wanted to have some input into that, um, we can, it does, I don't want it to just be me saying, like, ah, it's all got to go, so, but if we, if there's, you know, more input, that would be useful. So that's it for, for me.
Uh, just a few quick things, uh, I warned you all, I might have a dramatic announcement today, but I don't yet, so it's going to be boring. Um, I wanted to thank the Board of Civil Authority and all the election volunteers for a, uh, working the election, which was surprisingly high turnout based on the early vote, so we were caught a little off-guard, but it all went well. Um, I, I want to thank the voters of the city for a third term, I know it wasn't exactly a contest, but thank you anyway. Um, having said that, water and sewer bills are due tomorrow. And, um, just quickly, so, Donna, you were talking about information, you know, the, the information on the right not being available, um, just so you know, the same information was actually physically put into each voting area, um, and that is actually required by law with the charter change now, we have to make all that information available to everybody, so, just in that particular instance, they, I feel like they were, boom, inundated with it.
I know, I mentioned to people, and they would say, oh, was that what that was? They just put their ballots on top and marked them, they didn't pick up the paper, so they need to know that it's in there. I know it sounds a little elementary, but I think people are so overwhelmed that we may need to give them a little breadcrumb.
Yeah, I just, it's, I mean, I would just argue, from the election administrator standpoint, that there is only so much you can do, I mean, a part of participating in democracy does require you to sort of step out and, you can't have everything delivered to your door, I think with the, the charter changes, it's an extraordinary amount of communication you do with them. Um, I think with the bond votes, it's, it's more than usual, I don't know if that's more, but those are also prescribed by law, so I'm not saying I'm, I'm opposed to other things, but I can tell you from personal experience, you're, no matter what you do, there are going to be people who always feel that way, um, so, you know, we can take those steps, but you gotta, the voters have to take that step too.
On that point, uh, I did note, there was a letter to the editor, um, asking for us to go back to sending out the, the books to every home, saying that they missed, missed out, I don't know. I just have a few things, um, as members of Vermont League of Cities and Towns, we have access to certain training, so I just want, if you guys didn't already receive this, there is a new, uh, select, or our Spring Select Board Institute, which is for elected officials such as yourselves on governing bodies, it's covering things like roles and responsibilities, open meeting law, conflicts of interests, Clean Water Act requirements, maintaining local highways, human resources, legislative updates, so we, uh, it is on Saturday, March twenty-four, um, at Lake Maury, so if anyone is interested in this or any of these types of VLCT training, the city does support these, and we support your attendance, so those are available to you. Hopefully, we'll train you so well, you won't need to spend, you're certainly welcome to them. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we are working toward a TIF letter of intent, I know there's a, that's a very complicated topic, and a lot of issues that the council is going to have to work through and decide, uh, and so it'll be clear that, um, we may need to file this to meet a filing deadline, but it does not commit us to an actual application, we can withdraw it the next day, but also didn't want to create any surprises when someone says, oh, you filed your letter, and we didn't know about it, so. A couple of administrative things, with the former mayor, I, weekly, and I used, we had kind of a running list of topics we discussed, and at the request of the previous council, I would email out that list most every week, um, so people could see what the mayor and I talked about, we had our first meeting today with a list, so I didn't know if that was something people still wanted to get, it's the same list, just, uh, updated, but, so, I, I'm semi-reliable at that, and at least you can see the topics that we're discussing, and, um, you know, then you can ask either one of us if you want more information about it, because sometimes we are gearing up on the topics that are pre-council, so it's good for you to know what's going on. And, um, very simple question, but, um, as a, as a new group, you do get to make one big executive decision, do you want to continue keeping your meetings at six-thirty, or do you have a different start time?
I don't have strong feelings about this, and other people have more constraints.
You start at as late as seven-thirty and as early as five-thirty, in my time, so...
Five-thirty is way too hard.
I'm not suggesting, I'm just...
That was during the zoning, that was terrible.
Other times, too.
Rosie? Do we want to think about seven unless we have significantly larger agendas?
Seven would be fine with me, I also, you know, hope to keep things moving, you know?
Well, that might inspire us to do that.
Right, right.
I would accept seven.
Let's try it, you see, well, we can try it.
Only problem with seven is the backend, but, um...
Right, well, and if, uh...
Is it a hardship for city staff to come back at seven, or?
Well, I, I, you know, look, it's, it's, I mean, we're here, it doesn't, you know, I mean, I stay through, so I don't think, it's a lot of people do, so...
Well, and we can just also see if we are, even with a lighter agenda, you know, not getting through it by ten, I mean, I would like to be ending our meetings by ten, um, if not earlier, so...
Nine, nine.
Right, ten, ten to me is the, the latest I want to go, and start turning into a pumpkin after that, so...
But we can try to control, you know, what goes on in the agenda, and obviously, last year, we had a very time-consuming thing, and we all, we also all talk at these meetings, so we, we ourselves control how long we need.
Uh, one, I'm, a question on that, what time does the city staff day typically end, apart from you?
The, the, the office hours are eight to four-thirty.
Yeah.
Um, department heads, you know, the management staff, depends what's happening.
Okay, so, earlier or later start times for our meetings don't necessarily make a huge difference for staff?
I don't know, a couple of them, you know, it's Todd, what he thinks.
Do you guys care?
A half hour makes a difference to me, I mean, I don't, it's not enough time to really do anything, so I need to work through it, and it seems that's quite, uh, in general.
Get some meat or whatever, um, and, you know, actually, for people like, for me who lives in town, I actually, I might actually open up a window to run home instead of staying a few, so, you know, that's what I used to do when I was later, but I, most of the time, I'm just getting ready for the meetings, so, you know, everyone's...
Sounds like there's some consensus about seven.
It's worth a try, and if it doesn't work out, then six-thirty's fine.
All right, let's try for that, seven, right?
Finally, that's what I asked.
Okay, great, I, I think that's it, so...
As long as we're done by ten minutes of it.
Well, and I anticipate this is going to be one of our shorter meetings of the year, so, without objection, yeah, we'll adjourn, ten of eight.
Thanks, everyone.